Our loving heavenly Father, our gracious and wonderful God, the one who gives promises and also fulfills them according to the good pleasure of thy will. We are here in thy presence this afternoon with great expectations to hear thy word and be edified, corrected, instructed, molded and mended in thy presence. Oh Lord, speak to us even in this evening morning afternoon session. We thank thee for all those who could come. Also pray for those who could not come, Lord give them their personal blessing too. And also we have to dedicate a child that also may be a great blessing for us. Committing all of us under loving hand, pray with thanksgiving in Jesus precious name. Amen. We have a dedication of a child. Before we could share the word, we will pray for the child. I would like to read from Exodus, chapter two verse nine. Book of Exodus. Chapter two, verse nine. "And Pharaoh's daughter said unto her, Take this child away and nurse it for me, and I will give thee thy wages; and the woman took the child and nursed it." Shall we all read together, all of us? "And Pharaoh's daughter said unto her, Take this child away and nurse it for me, and I will give thee thy wages; and the woman took the child and nursed it." Here we have a wonderful picture how God has given the children to nurse them for him. That means to say, our homes are crutches. You know crutch? Where the child is working woman, working people, they keep the child in some crutch to take care of them. So that is what exactly we are doing. They are the gift of God according to Psalm one twenty seven, verse three. They are God's heritage. We have to take care of them. We are bringing up our children for him that should never forget. Great heritage has been entrusted unto us. We have to bring up the child in the nurture and admonition of the word of God for his glory. Even as we read in I G F forty three, verse seven. He has created us for his glory. So also the child created for his glory. What we, the parents, have to provide spiritual atmosphere right from the young age so that she may spiritually be groomed. In the days to come, she may be born again and be baptized and become sure and strong pillar in the house of the living God. That is the purpose. Another thought is, Lord said, I will build my church and the gates of hell shall not prevail against it. Lord is building his spiritual house. Spiritual house needs spiritual material. Spiritual material is not drawn from the streets. Spiritual material is drawn from godly families. So there is a bound and responsibility for godly parents to bring up the children as spiritual material for the spiritual house. It is a great ministry. And I remember at the time of their wedding, I said something like this. They are now going to be united in the holy matrimony. In the marriage, they are accepting a great ministry from the Lord. It is like an ordination ceremony as you know, the pastors and reverends are set apart for a great purpose. So also this boy and the girl are set apart. They are ordained for a great ministry from the Lord. They get promoted after some time, I said. I don't know whether you remember it, I remember what I spoke on your wedding day. After some time, they are going to be declared as husband and wife. Then after some time, they are going to get a promotion. They will be called father and mother, parents. And then after some time, they will become grandparents also. There is a progression. So in the process, there is a responsibility for the parents to provide spiritual atmosphere for the child so that there may be a spiritual material supplied to the spiritual house. There is a great responsibility. So now we are going to pray for the child. Emmanuel and Catherine blessed with the baby girl. Sometime ago, we will be praying for them and the little child. We all could be in the spirit of prayer. Shall we pray? Our loving heavenly Father, our gracious and the wonderful God, we thank thee for the blessed time thou hast given unto us. Thank thee for the way thou hast blessed your family. Thank thee for thy gracious dealings with us. Thank thee for Emmanuel and Catherine. Oh Lord, in a wonderful way, thou hast brought them together in the holy matrimony. And due time, thou hast blessed them with channity, ketura, Lord, in thy own time. Oh Lord, bless the child as she grows, she may grow to be thy child. Thank thee for all the help thou hast given unto Catherine at the time of the confinement. Thank thee for all the doctors in the nursing team who helped her. So Lord, bless the mother and the child. Keep them in very good health and strength. And as Ketura grows, she may grow to be thy child. Bless the good food that she eats, water she drinks, and glorify thy name. God, as thou hast given the child for these dear ones, oh Lord, to nurse it, nurse the child for you. Oh Lord, help the parents may understand this spiritual need of the spiritual house and they may provide spiritual atmosphere for the child. She may steadily grow in thy grace as she turns around, walks around, runs around, protect her from every common danger. The angels to whom thou hast given charge may take care of her. Committing her and the whole family into loving hand, expecting great things to happen on her behalf as they trust thee and serve thee. Pray with thanksgiving in Jesus precious name. Amen. Children are the heritage of God. It is a great responsibility for the parents to bring up the children for the glory of God because as we are seeing, children are prepared as spiritual material. That is the responsibility of the parents. In order that our children may grow in the grace of the Lord, parents have to sacrifice. That is the word. Lord said, I will build my church. And he gave a sacrifice, he sacrificed himself. He gave himself on the cross of Calvary. So also, in order the child may grow in the grace of the Lord, parents have to sacrifice much. Note my word. You have to sacrifice in order that your children may grow in the grace of the Lord. And children should, as they grow, they watch you. They should watch you reading the word of God. They should watch you praying unto the Lord. They should watch you in making haste to run to the house of God. They should watch you having profitable, edifying, illuminative fellowship with the fellow saints. As the children watch you, they will also in the due time, they will also grow in the grace of the Lord. So may God help us that we may bring up our children according to the word of God. Now shall we turn to book of Micah? Chapter two, verse seven. Book of Micah, chapter two, verse seven. "O thou that art named the house of Jacob, is the spirit of the Lord straightened; are these he is doing; do not my words do good to him that walketh uprightly? Is the spirit of the Lord straightened? Is the spirit of the Lord shortened?" May our blessed Savior bless this portion for us. This question is a great challenge to us. How shall we answer a question like this? Has the spirit of the Lord lost his ancient power? As the years passed by, decades and centuries passed by, the power that was there in the beginning, the power that created the heavens on the earth. Lord said merely, let there be light, and there was light. That is the power of God. So the power that was there in the beginning, has it lost its ancient power? How shall we answer this question? Is the spirit of the Lord straightened? In Telugu, the word used there is dhirgashantham. Telugu, rasakon, aatma, aatma yaka shikti. Hindi, English version, Hindi. And Tamil also, I think in the same way it is there. Is the spirit of the Lord straightened? We are considering the fragment in first Corinthians one twenty four, Christ the power of God. So Christ the power of God is manifold. There is power of the word, there is power of the blood, power of the cross, power of resurrection, power of waiting upon the Lord, and power of prayer, power of praise, and so on. There are so many channels by which a believer could draw the power to live for him. So this power is available to us because Lord is in our hearts. When we accepted Christ in our hearts, he came with that power to dwell in our hearts, to control us and govern us and make that power available to us. Same power that was available in olden times for the apostles who could risk their lives and did the work of the Lord. Same power is available even today. But today's believer is running after the world rather than enjoy our position in Christ and appropriate the unsuchable riches of the Lord Jesus Christ. But we are running after uncertain riches. We should focus on the unsuchable riches of the Lord Jesus Christ we have in Christ. So it is only then we can enjoy the power of God. Why we are not able to enjoy that power? We would like to see some of the reasons why we are not able to enjoy the power. Firstly, I would say, lack of faith. We talk about faith, we preach faith, we sing a lot of songs of faith, and we also communicate in so many ways that you have faith because you claim to be a believer. But when we look very minutely in our own life, in the word that faith may be there, but in practice, that faith is lamentably lacking. That faith is not there. You have to practice faith. What have God says in second Corinthians five seven. You are not to walk by sight, but you are to walk by faith. Lot walked by faith. Went by that green land and pitched his tent toward Sodom, and then he dwelt in Sodom and he became the elder of Sodom. That means he became a very important person because he was sitting at the gate. Those days, those who sit at the gate are the elders of the town. So that is how he was sucked into the world slowly and steadily. Abraham was a man of faith, but Lot went by sight. That is why he incurred heavy loss. Heavy loss so much that Amorites and Moabites came through him. So we ought to have faith in God. Lack of faith will bring in so many problems in our life. We bring in confusion and chaos because of lack of faith. That we have just passing, I mentioned about Abraham and Elimelech. How because of the lack of faith, they entered into so much of complication. Concerning Abraham, it is written in Hebrews, chapter eleven, verse eight. Not knowing where he was going, he went out of his hometown. That is how he believed God, total trust on the true and the living God. But afterwards, he failed. Elimelech was in Betraham Judah. He looked at Moab when there was a famine. He went in there and he also suffered heavy loss. So we ought to have faith. See, there is an instance in Luke's Gospel, chapter nine, concerning the disciples of the Lord Jesus Christ. Luke's Gospel, chapter nine. Verse one. Verse one and two, shall we all read together? Luke's Gospel, chapter nine, verses one and two. "Then he called his tall disciples together and gave them power and authority over all devils and to cure diseases; and he sent them to preach the kingdom of God and to heal the sick." Lord Jesus Christ gave power to them. Lord Jesus Christ personally gave power to them to heal the sick. He gave power over everything. But we find they could not exercise that power. They failed to do that work. Afterwards, that man came, we came to your disciples. They could not drive out the devil. And Lord rebuked them. See verse forty, Luke's Gospel, chapter nine, verse forty. "And I besought thy disciples to cast him out, and they could not." Lord gave them the power. They were equipped with power, but they could not exercise that power. They could not experience really and enjoy that power that Lord has given. So they could not even exercise, they failed. It is a miserable failure on the part of the disciples. Such a great advantage they could not take. Then we find in the seventeenth chapter of Matthew's Gospel, in the same situation, Matthew explains as Lord was alone, the disciples go and ask him, why we could not cast out devils? Then Lord said, such things will happen only by fasting and prayer. See, we need to have prayer life. Prayer life produces power. There was a man, once he prayed in a God servants meeting in Hebron, Hyderabad. While he was praying, he said like this, Lord, I know personally, when there is more prayer, there is more power. When there is less prayer, there is less power. When there is no prayer, there is no power. I know it, Lord, but I am not enjoying the power, he said. He made a confession, true confession. So when you pray more, then you have more power. When you pray less, there is less power. Prayer means what? By praying unto the Lord, you are saying, oh Lord, I depend upon you. When you are not praying, when you do not have the habit and the exercise of prayer, you are saying, Lord, I am independent of you, I can manage myself. Then how can you enjoy the power of God? You ought to depend upon him, trust him. It is only then you can enjoy the unlimited power of God in the midst of any situation that you may confront in your life. Consecrate those very situations which are uncomfortable unto the Lord. Another thought we find from the word of God is, if you consider the overall word of God, God will never keep us comfortable. Note that word. Lord will never keep us comfortable, but he will allow lot of uncomfortable situations and in that situation, he will comfort us. See Psalm one hundred nineteen, verse seventy five. There we understand, in his faithfulness, he afflicts us. In his faithfulness, he sustains us. In his faithfulness, he led us thus far. In his faithfulness, he has done wonderful things in our life. But same word of God says, in his faithfulness, he afflicts us. In his faithfulness, he troubles us. In his faithfulness, he allows unbearable sickness, unbearable grievance, unbearable disappointments. When we accept the other blessings, why can't we accept this also? Then you will rejoice, that is the Christian life. What have God says, with much tribulation, you should enter into the kingdom of God. That is what we read in Acts of Apostles, chapter fourteen, verse twenty two, and even John's Gospel, chapter six, verse thirty three. Lord himself said, in this world, you shall have tribulation. But be of good cheer, I have overcome the world. So that victory he has given to us. He bore all the sufferings on the cross of Calvary for you and me. And he opened not his mouth in the midst of the suffering. We read in I G F fifty three, verse seven. He opened not his mouth, he opened not his mouth. He bore suffering silently. He suffered for us. He shed his precious blood for us so that we could be enriched, we could be purchased by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. Now, when we are passing through trials and tribulations, you, if you are exercising faith, you will learn to look unto him. You will learn to depend upon him. See the false experience. Because he had faith, he saw all the troubles that he faced in a different way. Second Corinthians, chapter four, eight and nine. "We are troubled on every side, yet not distressed; we are perplexed, but not in despair; persecuted, but not forsaken; cast down, but not destroyed." This would be the ideal faith of a believer. This would be the ideal experience of a true believer of the Lord who depends upon him totally. In this retreat or the special meetings, let us take a decision. Those who are following Christ, Lord, thus far and no further. I have been doubting you in so many situations. When I felt sick or when I faced some problem, from now on, I trust you. I trust you. Total dependence means, there was a man, godly person, who was translating Bible into Eskimo language. Eskimo language has got limited vocabulary, limited alphabets. So he was trying to find out proper expressions for various situations in the Bible. He was translating. But he was stuck up with one expression in English, faith. He could not put it in the Eskimo language properly. So what should I say? He was wondering, he was sitting and pondering upon. At the same time, one gentleman visited him and he came, entered the room. Then he said, please sit down. Then he sat. The way he sat, it was very interesting for him. He not only sat on the chair, but he put his legs also on the chair. So that man came and sat on the chair and put these two legs also on the chair. This man saw it, then he said, hey, now I got it. That is faith, means total dependence, total trust. That is how we have to trust the Lord. You may have good education, good qualification, good job, plenty of dollars in years, and also so many facilities you may have, big bungalow, so many things, cars, varieties of cars you may have. But in the midst of all this, you should not miss faith on God. It is because of lack of faith, we are not able to appropriate that power. We are not able to enjoy that unlimited power God has kept for us. We have to enjoy the power of God. That is why he has shed his precious blood that we may enjoy the power of God. In Micah, chapter one, chapter two, verse seven, we have read was that question. Is the spirit of the Lord straightened? How can we answer this? The answer is, the spirit of God, the power of God has not reduced its power. Power is the same. But problem is where? The problem is with us. See Book of Isaiah fifty nine. Isaiah fifty nine, verses one and two. "Behold, the Lord's hand is not shortened that it cannot save; neither is ear heavy that it cannot hear; but your iniquities have separated between you and your God, and your sins have hid his face from you, and he will not hear." It is because of our sins. His hand is not shortened. His power is not shortened. His power has not been reduced. Same power is available, but our sinful life, our sinful thoughts have separated us from God. So because of which, he is not able to even hear our prayers. We read in Psalm sixty six, verse eighteen. "If I regard iniquity in my heart, Lord will not hear me." So you have to come onto the ground of holiness, righteousness. We read actually Psalm thirty four, verse fifteen. God's ears are always open unto the cries of the righteous, righteous, righteous. Remember that. So we have to come onto the ground of righteousness, holiness, sanctification. Being on that ground, you pray unto the Lord, Lord will hear your prayers. For that, you have to trust him. Have faith in God. March Gospel, eleven twenty two. If we have faith, any situation can be transformed by the power of God. That is why wonderful illustrations we find in Hebrews, chapter eleven, that list of heroes of faith. Concerning Noah, it is written. "By faith, Noah, being warned of God, of things not seen as yet, moved with fear, prepared an ark to the saving of his house, and thus he condemned the world by faith." That verse, Hebrews, chapter eleven, verse seven, begins by the expression, by faith, and concludes by the expression, by faith. In between, there is a wonderful sevenfold lesson on faith. Faith gets inculcated by the word of God. We have quoted earlier also Romans ten seventeen, not to be forgotten. Faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God. In order that our faith may be multiplied and increased in our life journey, you have to continue in the word of God according to John's Gospel, eight thirty one. Unless and until you continue, means continuing means not just reading and meditating and listening. You have to do the word of God, practice the word of God, show forth, obedient to the word of God. We obey conveniently, but certain situations, you don't obey to the word of God. In Nellur, somebody said, when we are strictly talking about certain things. And they don't be that strict, don't be that, you know, tight in the word of God. I said, we have to go by the word of God. We have to be controlled by the word of God. You have to be guided by the word of God. You have to be governed by the word of God. And our life should be within the parameters of the word of God. Otherwise, how can we be the believers? How can we be the Christians? Christian is the one who follows Christ. And this word titled Christian, how did it come? The disciples, when they prayed in the upper room, they did not deliberate it nor they discussed about it by what name would be known in this world. By their life pattern, by their behavioral pattern, others, Christ the ether, beyond the Christendom, they call them, a Christian, a Christian is going. See Acts of Apostles. Acts of Apostles, chapter four, verse thirteen. Acts of Apostles, chapter four, verse thirteen. "Now when they saw the boldness of Peter and John, perceived that they were unlearned, ignorant men, they marvelled, and they took knowledge of them, and that they had been with Jesus." What a wonderful testimony. Ignorant and unlearned men. But the greatest testimony is that they had been with Jesus. That changed their life, that transformed their life. That is why these very unlearned, ignorant men could turn the world upside down. These very Galileans, they have filled Jerusalem with the glorious gospel of the Lord in the strict opposition. Their lives were in danger, but yet they did not fear for their lives. It is written in Acts fifteen, verse twenty six. "Men that have hazarded their lives for the name of Lord Jesus Christ." That is the spiritual level God wants every one of us, those who are born again, to come to that level of spiritual life. It is only then we could be of some use to our families and also to the church. The first thing is, why we are not able to enjoy the power of God? It is because of lack of faith. We talk about faith, but we don't have faith, we have to confess it. And secondly, it is because of lack of separation. Lord saved us and also separated us. We find in John's Gospel, chapter fifteen, verse nineteen. He has chosen us out of the world. He has delivered us from the power of darkness and translated us into the kingdom of his son, Lord Jesus Christ, according to Colossians one thirteen. In first Peter two nine, he has called us out of darkness into his marvelous light. There is a change, there is a total transition from world to his spiritual realm. By faith, we live in the spiritual heavenly places. That is what we read in Ephesians, chapter two, verse six. He has raised us up to the heavenly places whereby we could sit together with Christ Jesus. By faith, we live in that spiritual abode. How about us? If we have that life of separation, then God will bless you. You will be a means of great blessing. There should be a demarcation. There should be a separating line from the world. You are living in this world, but you are not of the world, word of God says in so many ways. If you are a friend of the world, you will cease to be a friend of God, word of God says. So though you are living in this world, you should realize that you are not of this world. Your citizenship is in heaven, Philippians three twenty. Our citizenship is in heaven, that means what? I am a representative of heaven on this earth. I am an ambassador for Christ's policies. I represent heaven on this earth. So how do I behave? With royal dignity, with divine dignity, with heavenly dignity, I should conduct myself on this earth as we move around. Neighbor should know that you are a Christian follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. Your obvious people should know that you are a believer of the Lord. When I was working, our headquarters was in Calcutta. I was working in New Delhi in an international advertising company. There is something called Durga Puja, which is very famous in Calcutta, Bengal. Some staff members came, the departmental manager of administration, they said. They said, in the coming week, Saturday, we are going to conduct Durga Puja in your cabin because you are finance manager, finance is very important in the company, we are going to do that puja. I said, nothing doing. It will not happen as long as I am the finance manager here. Then the administrative manager said. You will have problem. I said, I don't worry about anything. This thing will not happen because I don't believe it. I will not allow it, I said. Then they went and actually complained to the vice president. And he said, very nicely, he said, you should honor his faith, he said. You should honor his faith. So that is how Satan was defeated. So that is how Satan was defeated. If I wanted to just please the administrative manager, ah, come on, Karuna, Karlo, Ambi, Apisha, family. Then you lose your testimony. So you should magnify Christ, as I was telling in the other day. You have to magnify Christ through your life. Christ should be seen, not you. Christ should be magnified, projected, portrayed through your day-to-day behavior. That will come only when you live life of separation. If you read through the word of God, power of God is linked with separation. If there is separation, there is power. If there is no separation, there is no power. That is why word of God exercises in second Corinthians, chapter six. Second Corinthians, chapter six, verse fourteen. Be ye not unequally yoked together with unbelievers? For what fellowship with righteousness, with unrighteousness? And what communion hath light with darkness? And fifteenth verse also, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen also. And what concord hath Christ with Belial? Or what path hath he that believeth with an infidel? And what agreement hath the temple of God with idols? For you are the temple of the living God. As God has said, I will dwell in them and walk in them, and I will be their God, and they shall be my people. Therefore, come out among them and be separate, say the Lord, and touch not the unclean thing, and I will receive you. So we should have a life of separation. Though we are living in this world, we should not mingle with world. That is where, when it comes to the faith that I exercise, I should not compromise. We should be uncompromising believers. We should set a demarcation from our neighbors and the world, and world will respect you of your faith. That is very, very important. Wherever you mix up and compromise, then you will not be a testimony. Wherever God has kept you, if God has brought you all the way from India, from various states and established you here in Atlanta, we believe there is a great purpose. You are not here by an accident or by chance, by a divine appointment, God has kept you. Ask the Lord, I would suggest, Lord, why you have brought me here? Help me to know thy purpose and help me to obey to thy purpose and plan and will. Then God will bless you and God will use you for his purpose. So the lack of separation is another thing that we cannot, because of which you are not able to enjoy the power of God. We have the story of Samson in Judges, from thirteenth chapter onwards, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, we have his account. There is a great example of how separation is linked with power of God. As long as he maintained that Nazarene situation, separated situation, he enjoyed unlimited power. Once there was a time when he confronted with a young lion, hungry lion, bare hands he killed it. Another time, as he was being, he was caught and as he was being taken, one thousand soldiers were around him with all the weapons. What did he do? He took a jawbone of an ass and killed all one thousand men. One thousand men he killed with jawbone of an ass. How many times he would have swung his hand? At least once per individual? At least once per individual, he would have swung his hand. Thousand times, the hand will not get up. But one thousand soldiers he killed by the jawbone of an ass, that speaks of the great manifestation of the power of God. It is not his doing, God did through him. Another time, he was in the city of Gaza, Philistines thought, now we caught him. Now he is in the city, we will catch Samson. Then what, what happened? At the middle of the night, Samson gets up and takes the gates of Gaza on his shoulder and walks off to the mountain. Gates means not small doors. Dig, you know, doors would be there for each city, it is a city gate. He took the gates, gates on his shoulder and walked out to the mountain, not plain. That is the power of God, manifestation of the power of God. So this power he enjoyed as long as he lived a life of separation. So also in our lives, if we live a life of separation, it is then you can enjoy the power of God, the promises that God has given unto you. You can enjoy in an unlimited way. Lord said, fear not, I am with you. Then you can enjoy the power when you live a life of separation and claim the promises that God has given unto you. I have enjoyed in my life that power because I exercised faith and I and my family lived a life of separation. We did not compromise with the neighbors. God has helped us in a mysterious way. It was in nineteen sixty-nine, my wife was carrying a ninth month. At the time, I was in Anantapur Engineering College. I was living there with my wife who was carrying, and I was working in NCC, I asked officer commanding. Sir, there are no vehicles during the night from Anantapur Engineering College to the hospital. Because during the day only some city bus comes and some horse cart comes, Jatka Bandi, comes during the day, night, no transport. So I asked my officer to provide some transport facility. So he immediately gave an order, the vehicle would be available for J C Rao. He gave, passed an order, he told the military men that vehicle should be available, you make arrangements. And then everybody was happy, they wanted to help me. Seventeenth May, seventeenth April nineteen sixty-nine, my wife developed pains and I have to take her to the hospital at eleven o'clock in the night. Then I went to the military men who are living, one Jyoti Ramalingam and another David Raj. David Raj is a nominal Christian. So I went to Jyoti Ramalingam and said, I have to take my wife to the hospital, let us go. Because I presumed that they have the key of the vehicle, military vehicle. Jyoti Ramalingam said, today driver has not given the key, he said. Every day he would give the key to Jyoti Ramalingam and goes. That particular day, he forgot to give. When he said that, I knew my testing time has begun. Whenever God gives promise, until it is finished, it is the testing time, testing time of a believer. I thought my testing time has begun. Now that year's Motocord verses what? Isaiah forty-one, verse ten, fear not, I am with thee. And Hebrews chapter thirteen, verse five, for he has said, I will never leave you, nor forsake you. Then Judges, chapter twelve, verse six, fear not, oh mighty man of valor. These are the three texts that appeared on Motocord of that year nineteen sixty-nine. I and my wife have been claiming those promises for our family, for our individual family lives. Then I remember those verses, Lord, we have been praying for these promises, now you only help us. I don't pray long prayers, very brief prayer, Lord, help. In that situation, I prayed in my heart. That man said, very sorry Rao, then I said, let us go to David Raj. Then we went to David Raj, David Raj said, hurry, he has not given me either. Then what should we do? They were, you know, talking amongst themselves, why he has not given, they were arguing. Then I said, let us go to the vehicle. Let us go to the vehicle, I said, by faith. Then they said. What should we do there? I said, come, let us go to the vehicle. It is just, you know, hundred, hundred yards. Then we went to the vehicle. I was praying, by faith I came there, I do not know how the vehicle would start, keys illa, keys, no keys. Then I was praying, David Raj went to the security man and asked him, do you have matchbox, give me a matchbox. Then he took the matchbox, he took out four watch matchsticks and he somehow opened the door with some device and he sat in the seat and put the four matchsticks in the reverse order into the ignition. I was praying, I did not see all this afterwards, they told me. I was only praying, Lord, help. And I quoted these promises, who have been claiming for these promises. Suddenly I heard the engine started. With four matchsticks, he started the vehicle. You also start sometimes when you misplace your keys. By faith it can start. That is one of the greatest events that has taken place in my life. That is why my faith in God multiplied, increased more and more. Matchsticks started the vehicle and then David Raj, David Raj, David Raj said. Then I said, David Raj, David Raj, don't leave the clutch. You know, if he loses the clutch again, it will go. Then he said, I will not live. Many times, we lose the blessings because we lose the clutch. We are not consistent, we are not continuous in our faith and trust on the Lord. Wonderfully, God helped that day and he started the vehicle, came home, took my wife. And there was no, nobody in the army somewhere, he drove. Now he is driving slowly and steadily, three and a half kilometers from Engineering College in Anantapur to the General Hospital. Then by four o'clock, we entered into the compound. By the time I was just crying, oh Lord, how great the work. I cannot explain the joy of the Lord that I had in my heart at that time. And next day, early morning, the same day, eight forty-five, I was blessed with a child, Hepsiva, her name. It is a mystery for me, that day, that operation, you know, that delivery was very tough. Doctor said, your wife should have died, but God only preserved your wife and the child. Exactly after twenty years, on the same day she was called to glory. Eighteenth of April nineteen eighty-nine. Mysteries happen in our midst, but in the midst of what I am saying is, trust the Lord. If you trust the Lord, what he can do is beyond your imagination. You cannot even explain how God can work on your behalf. But you have to live a life of faith. You have to live a life of separation. You see, there is one or two verses I would like to read for you, Matthew's Gospel. As the spirit of God is prompting, I am reading these verses, Matthew's Gospel, chapter thirteen, verse fifty-eight. And he did not many mighty works there because of their unbelief. Lord wanted to do much more than what he has done. But it is written, he could not do there because of their unbelief, lack of faith. God wants to do much more in your life. Take this from me, on the base of the word of God. He wanted to do much more than what he has already done, but you yourself is a great hindrance for the flow of the power of God in your life. Surrender yourself at the feet of the Lord. Lord, here am I, I have come. Lord, take hold of me and lead me. Life of separation. Life of separation, I mentioned about Samson. What a pity when we see him grinding in the prison house. Lack of faith, lack of separation, lands you a terrible situation. See Judges, chapter sixteen. Judges, chapter sixteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. He is in a miserable state because of lack of faith and lack of separation. He compromised with the world. He yielded to the temptations in his life. It is very important to read Judges sixteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. And she made him sleep upon her knees and she called for a man and she caused him to shave off the seven locks of his head and she began to afflict him and his strength went from him. Note that, his strength went from him. And she said, the Philistines are upon thee, Samson, and he awoke out of his sleep and said, I will go out as at other times before and shake myself. And he wished not that the Lord was departed from him, what a sad thing. Strength went from him, the Lord departed from him, and verse twenty-one, but the Philistines took him and put out his wife and brought him down to Gaza and bound him with fetters of brass and he did grind in the prison house. What a tragedy. In the thirteenth chapter, it is said, he will begin to deliver the children of Israel from the hands of Philistines. Now he delivered himself into the hand of the Philistines. He became a marking stock among the people of enemies, Philistines. So that is what would happen if you don't live a life of separation. They are the great warnings. Many times, we get warning signals. You know, warning signals, but many times you jump to the signals and they end up into problems. In Delhi, most of the people, they don't abide by the discipline of the traffic. Road signs, they don't maintain. If the red light is there, they will jump and go away. Once, two friends were driving the car, you know, one fellow was driving, the other fellow was sitting with him. As he was going, red light was on and he drove off like that. After crossing the red light, the policeman hide behind the bushes in Delhi. They came out, they showed the hand, roko, roko, roko. Then that fellow said, you are mama, agaya, gadi roko. You know, the neighbor said. Then gadi, vehicle stopped and the policeman came and shouted at him, did you not see the red light? This fellow said, sir, I saw the red light, but I did not see you. So that is how many times we bypass, compromise very easily to the things around us. That is why today's believer, because of lack of faith and lack of separation, not able to enjoy the power of God in its fullness. Another thing I said was, I want to repeat again, through sufferings, through bereavements, through toughest situations, exercise patience. Patience, they say, is a great virtue, display it well. Patience, I mean not something like waiting for the bus to come or flight to come or flight to take off. Patience speaks of endurance in tough situations. Endurance means bearing tough situations. When you are passing through pressing situations, you bear them, that is the patience I am referring to. Colossians, chapter one, verse eleven. Colossians, if we have faith in God, if you are living a life of separation, this quality also you will have, patience in the midst of situations. Colossians one, eleven and twelve. Strengthened with all might according to his glorious power unto all patience and long suffering with joyfulness, giving thanks unto the Father, which has made us meet to be partakers of the inheritance of the saints in light. So God has done great things for us, whereof we are glad. We should continue to trust him, we should continue to live a life of separation unto him so that God's name may be glorified and we may be prepared for greater responsibilities. God wants you to make progress, how long you want to be in the same situation? A child, as he admitted in the class, first class, next year he goes second class and then third class, fourth class, like that, school final, intermediate, then college, like that. So there is a progression. So also we should have progress in our spiritual life. There is a guy in Karnul, he is known as Gajini Mohammed. Everybody, when he is cited in the Karnul town, young people say, hey, Gajini Mohammed is going. Why? Ten years he appeared for matriculation and failed. It is a known fact in the city of Karnul town. The movement is cited, say, Gajini Mohammed is going. Every class, ever learning, never able to understand, there is a verse now, see second Timothy. Second Timothy, chapter two, chapter three, verse seven. Ever learning and never able to come to the knowledge of the truth. Ever learning, lifelong you are learning only, but you have to put it into practice. Then only God's name would be glorified. We have to enjoy the power of God. See verse five, many believers are like this. Second Timothy, chapter three, verse five. Having a form of godliness but denying the power thereof from such turn away. There are two, three things there, just I want to highlight that, denying the power thereof. Only form of godliness. There is a Tilku saying. Just form of godliness, Bible in the hand, praise the Lord on the lips and singing songs of praise and all that. But they deny the power of God. The power of God is not, it is in them. It is because of lack of separation, lack of faith, lack of prayer life, lack of real praise. We need to have the power exhibiting through our life, not just form of godliness. A day will come, everything would be made manifest, there won't be any form of godliness, reality would come to life. There was a man I heard, he did not have a job. He was going everywhere, my flight also will take off. He was going everywhere for the job. Ultimately, he landed up in the zoo. He asked the zoo master, sir, I don't have a job for a long time, could you please help me? Some job, some menial job also I am prepared, because I am very hungry, I don't have money. He said, monkey's cage, cage, monkey's cage is empty. If you can act like a monkey, you have a job immediately. He said, sir, whatever you say, I will do it. Then he was dressed like a monkey, he was fed something, some food, and he was dressed like a monkey with some, you know, bushy hair and he was dropped in the monkey's cage and he was asked to jump like, act like monkey. And he was asked to jump like, act like monkey. So he was in the monkey's cage, trying to jump, act like monkey, jumping. Then all the people that day, those who, families who came, children were saying, hey, big monkey today, let us go there. So all the people gathered around that cage. This fellow got excited. When he got excited, he started jumping more and more. As he jumped more and more, he fell into the lion's cage. Then the lion came and rode at him. Then he said, bachao, help me, save me. That lion comes and twist his ear and says, shut up idiot, we will lose our jobs. What does it mean? Lion also nakili, monkey also nakili. But a time would come, everything would be made manifest. Come out of that form of godliness. Come out of that nominality. Come out of, come out to the reality. Enjoy the power of the living God. That power is available to us. Christ, the power of God. Any meditation of the scripture can never be concluded in this side of heaven. All that we see is only gleaning, you know, gleaning, parigallaram. We only pick up here and there something. A time would come when we go there, we exclaimed, as the king of Sheba exclaimed, seeing the grandeur and splendor of Solomon's palace. She said, even half was not told me. So that is how we will also explain, exclaim, everything would be made manifest only after going there. Until such time, we are meditating here and there, grasp something so that we may put it into practice. May God bless this word, may God continue to speak to us. Christ, the power of God. That power is available to us. Remember this, tell yourself again and again, the power that was available to Apostle Paul, available to Stephen, available to Peter. And all the servants of God in the past, even to brother Bhaksing. That power with the same intensity is available to each and every believer of the law. The difference is, they appropriated that power and they expressed that power. We are not able to appropriate, we are only appreciators of that power. How long you want to be there in that situation? May God speak to us, activate us by the power of the Holy Spirit, that we may appropriate that power and express that power. Christ, the power of God. Shall we pray? Our loving Heavenly Father, our gracious and wonder-working God. With all the limitation of time, we could see something concerning the verse in first Corinthians one twenty-four, where it said, Christ, the power of God. Help Lord that manifold power of God we may able to comprehend, understand. And put that power into practice by obedience to thy word and by living a life of separation, by having a life of faith. Oh loving Father, we have seen how people, when there was a lack of faith, they had to pay heavy penalty. When there was a lack of separation, they also suffered a lot in their lives. So help us, Lord, that we may have faith in thee, according to Mark's Gospel eleven twenty-two. And we also may live a life of separation, life of holiness, life of sanctification, life of righteousness. And thus, we may enjoy the unlimited power of God in our lives. And thus, we may be a blessing at home, we may be blessing in the places of work and in the blessings in the society and also in the church. So Lord, be with us. Even as we continue to meditate, Lord, be with the servant who will be sharing the word in the evening, anoint him afresh. Fill him with thy word, fill him with thy spirit, use him for thy glory and for thy honor. The very purpose for which thou have given the saints in, in the fellowship here, that burden, that burden may fully be, Lord, amplified, exemplified. And be manifested in our midst, even in this today evening meeting. Committing all of us into the loving hand, as I get back to Washington, take me in all safety, in thy will, grant me all the joining mercies. And in due time, Lord, in thy known time, help us to meet again. Committing all of us into the loving hand, expecting great things to happen in our midst as we trust thee and serve thee. Pray with thanksgiving in Jesus' precious name. Amen.